And five, four, three, two, one.
Good afternoon and welcome to the second school committee meeting of the school year. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they're recording this meeting. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For correspondence, we have an emailed letter from Ms. Janet Robinson dated August 7th, 2017 regarding high school athletic fees. We also have an emailed letter from Mr. Tom LaCusa, Select Board Chair, dated September 5th, 2017 requesting input for the charter review committee. Next, we have the approval of minutes. Melanie?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the August 30th, 2017 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed? Okay. Do we have any visitor comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Okay, moving on. We have a superintendent's report, just a brief few comments.
Yeah, a couple of quick hits. We are up and running and things seem to have settled in. Everyone's settling into new routines and new schedules and perhaps new teachers and things seem to be going very, very smoothly. It's that time of year when we are also attentive to transportation. Mr. Maz has been working to finalize our bus routes and certainly we're also interested in ensuring that our pedestrian students arrive just by walking or by school, excuse me, are getting to school safely. I want to thank the Long Meadow Police Department for their help in promoting that. We've got 23 crossing guards scheduled across the town that assist with students when they approach busy intersections. The PD has also helped get us online with our Safe Roots to School program. Last year, Blueberry was recognized with a gold level award from the state, so we're really proud of that and we're hoping to expand that Safe Roots to School program to some of our other elementary schools this year. And then also, the PD also just announced that on, interesting program, on October 4th, we'll be participating in an International Walk to School Day. And with that program, members of the Long Meadow Police Department will be walking with our elementary school children from Center, Blueberry and Wolf Swamp. So this is a nationwide event and I'm really happy to see that we're participating in it. And it's sort of a great time of year to remind the community once again of the importance of talking to their children about, you know, safe bicycle habits and safe walking habits. And I think we all share in the responsibility of getting kids to and from school safely, the community, Long Meadow Police Department, and certainly the school department. So we'll continue to keep our eyes on that. Great visit this morning from the school building authority. They joined us to take a tour through Williams and Glenbrook. They sent out some of their most senior directors and I'll thank Michelle and Russ for representing the school committee on that visit. We had some of our facility people, Mr. Maz had joined us, Stephen Crane, our town manager, was involved as well. And we were able to give them a firsthand view of some of the deficiencies and problems that we had cited in the statements of interest that we had submitted last winter. So I think it was a successful visit. We won't hear anything from the MSBA until December, so we, you know, we're kind of playing a waiting game at this point. If anyone has any questions about that, happy to try and get you some information. And then, as we talk tonight about school goal, school committee goals and district goals, I want you to know that our schools are busy constructing their school improvement plans for this year and they'll be working with their school councils to do that. So I think one of the things that Michelle and I have talked about is making sure that all our goals are in alignment and I'm starting to see that happening. I think that, you know, we're going to hopefully be in a position where we'll see that school committee goals are in line with our district improvement plan, which in turn inform our school improvement plans. So that's exciting to see all those arrows pointed in the same direction. So that's all I have. Any questions? Happy to answer.
I just wanted to thank you all for hosting the MSBA. Who was there today? It was Tom and Marty and Michelle and Russ?
Yes.
Thank you so much for taking, I know it was a big chunk of the day and then we have a school committee meeting and I know it's been a lot of time, so I really appreciate all of your time and effort on that. It's an important issue and it's exciting and thank you so much for all of your hard work on that issue.
Thanks.
Continuously, year after year. It's been many years at it, so hopefully it's moving in the right direction. Stay ahead. Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. So, Tom, do you have a report for us?
I do not have a report today.
Sue?
Nope.
Okay. I do. It's been a busy week. Included in your packet for information purposes is an emailed response to Ms. Janet Robinson that I wrote. I didn't CC the committee on the email because I referenced my own opinion on our athletic fees. We didn't want to violate any open meeting laws, so it's their prior information only. We will be doing a preliminary analysis of our athletic fees at a future finance subcommittee meeting. Eventually, the finance subcommittee will bring forward information to the full school committee for their consideration. Also included in your packet is an email from Mr. Tom LaCusa, Chair of the Select Board, requesting that our committee review, discuss and report back to the Charter Review Commission any feedback we have relative to our charter and how it affects the school committee's operation. After discussing this request, we've determined that the best way for us to proceed as a committee would be to individually review the relevant areas of our current charter and provide our feedback by way of a Google document similar to the one that you use for your school committee goals. In the next few days, we'll distribute that portion of the charter that relates to the school committee and our operations and also send you the Google Doc link. If you could provide your feedback by September 25th, that would be great and then we can review it at our next meeting, which is on September 27th. Also, I reached out to Principal Dunkerly, who oversees our student representative and student council at the high school. He and our student representative, Breggie, are going to meet and review some ways to work around our daytime meeting schedules so that we can ensure Breggie is as involved as possible. Once they talk, Mr. Dunkerly and I are going to connect again. I want to say I'm very committed to making sure we keep our student representative a part of all of our meetings. For today, Breggie will be joining us at the end of his school day, which is approximately at 2:20, so he will give his report then. Whatever we're in the middle of, we'll just stop and move on to his report. Last but not least, I felt the need to revisit our subcommittee organization and assignments based on some recent needs, movements and feedback. Keeping in mind everyone's busy schedules and outside responsibilities, I tried as best as possible to balance the workload we have as a school committee. In addition, I've removed some items from the operations subcommittee and made them separate positions. The new assignments and categories will be posted and distributed as soon as possible. I just want to touch base with everybody involved in the transitions first. And I think there's one more email that was added after we posted our agendas from Melanie, but it is for information only now because we couldn't add it to the agenda, but we need to have it, we'll have it as a future agenda item. That is it for my chair report. Does anyone else have anything from LPVC Legislative, SEAL, Food Services or Capital? New reports? Okay. So we'll move on to the finance subcommittee. Russ?
So you have in your packet some staffing changes and requests, which I think we handed this out last time, but we couldn't actually vote on it.
Correct.
Okay. So tonight, or today, are we just voting on these changes? Do you want to walk through those quickly?
Sure. So the top three changes that have been proposed would be adding a special ed teacher over at Wolf Swamp, increasing the elementary library positions back to the FY17 levels, which equates to a .4 increase across the three buildings, and some mentoring for our new principal over at Blueberry Elementary School. And then those three amounts are on the back of the page that's also attached to the report. So they're included in the bottom line of that document. And then on the bottom, the top two proposals, which would affect the funding for the adjustment counselor and the special education supervisor at Wolf Swamp, a portion of their salaries has been funded by the Title I grant. Now that the Title I grant for FY18 is being allocated across three schools to help utilize the funding that Wolf Swamp will receive, we felt that if we could pick up this portion in the general fund, it would allow them to continue with some of the services the Title I grant was providing there in previous years. So that would be an additional $27,800 for the adjustment counselor and $21,200 for the special ed supervisor that wouldn't affect their overall position, which is currently a 1.0, would just move it in funding in the FY18 budget. And then the adjustment counselor at the high school, we're requesting an increase of .6. They currently have 1.4 FTEs at the high school, there's approximately 950 students. Our proposal would be to increase that .4 position to a full-time 1.0 FTE. So it'll give them two full adjustment counselors at the high school.
And that would be the current person would just work full-time?
Yeah, that would be the expectation that we would increase the current individual there. And the last item would be to add an academic tutor position at Blueberry. It'd be a 1.0. It'd be about $33,000. I think as we talked at our last meeting, the class size in 5th grade at Blueberry was getting up into the mid-20 range, 24 and 25, and we felt that to add a teacher at this point would be more disruptive, so we thought maybe the possibility of having a tutor available as we monitor the class size would be something that might be a benefit, assuming that Blueberry wants or needs those resources.
Thank you.
And if you want me to touch on the other page, it's just an attrition sheet. So this is just kind of a summary of staffing changes that occurred from when the budget was finalized last year in February and then accepted, approved by town meeting in May. So obviously, we make assumptions on who the staff will be, but we have changes that occur, whether it be resignations or retirement. And so this is capturing positions where there's been some movement, either a new person has been added based on somebody leaving and/or changes in their salary based on movement on the salary schedule. So this is a fluid document and most certainly changes as things occur throughout the year, but as of August 20, August 30th, we were estimating we had about 111,000 in available funds in the general fund through attrition.
Can I ask a quick question?
As far as the academic tutor goes for Blueberry, are we able to ensure that that is being used for the 5th grade only and not sort of, oh, well, the 1st grade needs it, the 2nd grade needs it, or is it something that we can?
I think if that's, if that is part of your vote and that's how it's funded, then we would want to dedicate that to the 5th grade. I think the, we're, we want to, just we're in a little bit of a wait-and-see pattern right now because we just want to see what the needs are and where the needs are and when the needs are, and then as those, if those appear, then we would be in a position to supplement it with that academic tutor. So we would want to, if that was the committee's intention, that would be what we would do. We would, you know, and, yes?
Jess, do you have a question?
Yeah, so my understanding from the finance committee discussion, if my recollection is accurate, is that it was identified as a tutor for the 5th grade exclusively. So it would make sense that based on the recommendation, we would vote as amended a 5th grade academic tutor at Blueberry Hill School. Do we need a motion to amend?
Well, we don't have the motion out yet.
On the floor, yeah.
We can, why don't we use the recommended motion and then discuss amending it or would you, Russ?
Well, the way it's presented is it says 5th grade tutor. So unless we're planning on doing something else, I think the motion is to adopt this chart.
On here, it says academic tutor, so it would need to be amended.
Look on the, it says will be used to address class size concern at Blueberry Hill 5th grade.
Yeah, I think it would be clearer if it just said, like Karen was pointing out, 5th grade academic tutor, just so there's no question about it.
Well, that is what we're doing, right? That's what we want.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what you would propose is just adding academic tutor 5th grade. It won't show up in the budget that way because that's not the way the lines are created.
Yes, it's more for our own internal use.
I think in terms of what your intent is with your vote, we could just, where it says academic tutor, just to slash 5th grade.
Stephanie?
Can I get some clarification on what an academic tutor is? Is it a teacher? Is it a para? Is it what?
So it's a licensed educator. And these guys have more experience with the position and how it's been used here in Long Meadow, so I.
Yeah, we try to get a licensed teacher to take that position. We've had good luck with that so far. On occasion, we've hired people who have like specializations in reading and things like that, who aren't licensed teachers, if we're looking for us, was a big need. But it really is to help with maybe some small group work for kids, potentially help with some enrichment work for students, you know, utilize the wind block more effectively, you know, co-teach in a classroom situation. So there's lots of different things a tutor could do to help. I think the 5th grade wants to feel it out a little bit and see where that might be most useful.
Sometimes when you hear tutor, you think, you know, for remediation, and it could be that that position is deployed that way, but it also, as Sue hinted at, it could be used for enrichment or extension or to supplement the wind block. So there's, we just want to see, sometimes the person you hire is dependent on what the need is, so we just want to see how things are shaking out at that 5th grade and how we might best support the teachers and the kids there.
Russ?
So I could, you want me to try a motion with that included at the end? So I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee, the school committee approved the FY18 staffing changes. As indicated on the document titled FY18 Staffing Proposal dated September 13th, 2017, provided that the Blueberry Hill academic tutor will be solely used for the 5th grade.
Second. Discussion or further questions?
Is it written in the teacher's contract as to class size max or is that, no?
There's no language in the contract. Diane and I just had this discussion and your policy manual is silent on that as well, so it doesn't specify specific numbers. We're above where we want to be, you know? We're above where Long Meadow has historically been at the 5th grade level. But so often, you know, the appropriate class size is dependent on, obviously, the needs of the children in that class, you know? We have classrooms that are far smaller, you know, six, seven students, you know? But it all depends on what the level of need is. But we're above where we want to be. And then we included, I think a committee member, perhaps Michelle, had requested that we include some class size information, so that is in your packet as an information item. And again, for folks who might have missed our last meeting, you know, the reason we're above where we want to be is we had some very late registrations at the 5th grade level, some of which were attributed to the closing of a private school, some of which we just couldn't have predicted at all. But, you know, obviously, we want to support the students at that grade level.
So I, I don't see anybody. I do have one question on the new language with the motion. My only concern would be, we do have, like, the 3rd grade looks a little high. It's not quite at the cusp where we were with Blueberry, but if we get two or three students at the 3rd grade level, if there's, you know, a certain period of time during the day where that tutor would be useful, would be more useful at the 3rd grade level but isn't necessarily needed at the 5th grade level, are we limited by the language of the motion? So that would be my only.
I think if it's a regular routine thing where the position is being deployed at another grade level on a regular basis, I think we'll come back to you. And we can, you can decide what you want to do with that, you know? I mean, the truth is, at the elementary level, it's often all hands on deck. And you don't, you know, we don't look at a child and say, well, I can't, you know?
Right.
I'm a 4th grade teacher, I'm not going to help a 2nd grader, so. But if it's a regular scheduled routine part of that academic tutor's day, then we would, we would come back to you.
Okay, so you don't see limitations with the wording of the new length of the new motion?
Solely is always a challenge, but, you know, we'll, you know, we'll stay in communication with you on that.
Maybe it's. Really, read that, provided that the academic tutor is assigned to the 5th grade. Maybe that's better. There might be occasions when the tutor does go somewhere else.
Yeah. We still want to see what needs arise, you know? It's still early and we want to be respectful of the teachers. We want to see what.
Oh, are you kidding? What do I need to do? Do I have to call?
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? There has been a fire emergency reported in the building.
That's a fire drill. Hold the alarm.
Quick vote to adjourn.
Do not use the elevators.
Okay, can I take a motion to adjourn? Will we reconvene?
Let me record this for Diane.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll be back.
May I have your attention, please?
We've set our meeting.
May I have your attention, please?
Okay, it is 1:29 and I'm going to call the meeting back to order. See, where we left off, I believe we had a motion on the table. We were discussing it.
So I'd like to modify my motion to say that the tutor would be assigned to the 5th grade, so there could be some flexibility that they might be used occasionally somewhere else, but not assigned somewhere else.
I think we need a second on the amended motion. Any more discussion questions? Seeing none, we can call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Jess, are you opposed?
Sorry, no.
That's okay. Policy Subcommittee, do you have anything to report out? Okay. Operations Subcommittee has not met. We can go on to ongoing business. The Pension Task Force. Also included in your packet was an email from the Select Board to appoint a member to their pension task force. Mr. Gold attended the June 27th school committee meeting to explain what the task force has been charged with. And again, the email is in there for your reference if you needed to review anything. I know I've been doing some work on rearranging the subcommittees and assignments and everything, so I reached out to Russ to see if he would be interested, but if anybody had that on their radar and is interested in it, please let us know. Okay, so.
Come on.
So I would like to nominate Russ to serve on the Pension Task Force. I don't know if we need a vote for this position, so maybe to cover and be safe, we can appoint him by vote. So I nominated, is there a second for Russ?
A second.
Okay. Any discussions, questions related to that?
Thank you, Russ.
All those in favor of appointing Russ to serve on the Select Board's Pension Task Force? Okay, all those opposed? Abstain?
You should have opposed.
Thank you, Russ. We still would have won.
So should I get a hold of Mark correctly, Ron?
Yeah, I think that's best. Thank you. Okay, so now we can move on to the school committee goals. Each member was asked to submit two potential goals for the committee to consider during this meeting. We will review the submissions and those are actually in your packet. I think, let's see, if I can find them. Sue, Marty and Tom and Diane compiled them into one page where they basically put, if I can find it? Okay. What you see in black, I think, is the exact language that we submitted and what they did was group them into some categories. You see curriculum-related, operations-related, equitable programming and social-emotional. So that's great. They somehow fit into four categories just to review them. And then what you see in red was their recommendation, and Marty said this many times, I don't, he doesn't take owner, you know, doesn't want to push this on us, but he just helped to try to summarize and combine them so that we enveloped everybody's goals in, let's see, four, four different goals. So I'll just kick that out there to the committee for discussion. If you want to take a minute to review them, if you haven't already. Stephanie, you?
I'd just like to say, I think they're great. I think, who wrote, who wrote the consensus?
I took a shot at that.
Nice job.
But Sue laid the groundwork and put them into the buckets. I noticed there's, at the wording, I must have saved the document prematurely, so the last goal, it should say, aimed at reducing stress and anxiety. So it's just missing "and anxiety." And this.
Stephanie's gonna say it.
Yes.
Russ?
So I like the consensus goals, which we should probably read, I would think.
Yep.
The, but under operations, for example, some of these, like the new kind of packet or guideline for new members, that's like a task that we should, so you have an overall goal that maybe we can have underneath, you know, these are some of the things we want to complete this year so that it meets that goal.
To an objective.
Because I just don't want to lose something like that because it really is, I got on the committee and I know the three of you this year, it's like I went to the graduation within days of getting on the school committee, I had no idea what I was doing. So I think it's, that would be great to do that and it's one of those tasks that we can actually complete kind of ourselves or with help. So maybe we could lay it out that way with the overall goal and then some of the, some of them are just a repeat of the overall goal, kind of, but some of them are actual concrete things that I think we could tackle also.
Yep.
I kind of, I struggle with that too because you have your goal and then you have your objectives that'll help you kind of reach your goal, so I would put that kind of under an objective, which is, which is nice because those are the attainable things in the short term.
Yeah, I think we probably need to, to look at the main goal and then develop some actionable items for underneath that. We can use the wording here in order to develop that. Last year, did we do that at the same meeting? Did we pick the goals and then the?
I feel like we met a second time, smaller group of us and did all that, but we're kind of doing the same thing with our district goals at the moment, so maybe we can take it back and try to bucket these into actionable steps for you and bring it back. I don't know how long you want to wait to approve your goals, but.
Alternatively, you lock in your goals and then really your actions from meeting to meeting to meeting, you know, become the way that you fulfill these goals. So you have a goal relating to sort of operational effectiveness and if that means having an orientation, a better orientation for new members, then that could be an agenda item at a future meeting and you can say, you know, that you're directing us to do that. So I just, I would hate to see you get bogged down in trying to shape specific objectives under each of these goals. I think it could be a challenge, is it a matter of just letting your, your work from month, from week to week to week kind of drive the goals? It's another way of thinking about it.
I don't know who had their hand up first then. I said Jess and Karen, do you?
Did you get my goals, Sue?
They're all on here.
You did get mine because I accidentally sent you mine as an email.
I don't, well.
Instead of part of the?
There were, it was an anonymous submission, so I don't know who sent theirs in, but there was, there were goals that equaled everybody, so there were seven submissions.
Oh, okay, so.
Do you see yours on there?
Sort of.
Okay.
I literally copied and pasted the submissions. Okay, so. I was trying to find it, but I'm having trouble.
I didn't have my hand up. Okay, Karen?
I was going to say that maybe some of these two could be hashed out, the objectives could be hashed out in our subcommittees, like, you know, one whole chunk of this is operations, so that could be done in. of this is operations, so that could be done in Subcommittee, too, possibly.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Stephanie?
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping it clean and then having our objectives, you know, working towards those goals, having it go to... I mean, it's nice to see them all, and I think we can work off... We have this document in our packet and then work off that, but I think having the goals clean, and then at the end of the year, we can see how many things that we had achieved towards that goal. Just in reviewing other school committees and the goal, they get muddy and bogged down, and then it feels like they're useless. This, to me, seems like these are guiding goals for all of our action steps and objectives. That's just my thought.
Russ?
So I'll make a motion, and then we could keep talking about it, too, but I'd move to accept the recommended consensus goals of, number one would be promote delivery and assessment of K-12 curriculum that is aligned and coordinated across all disciplines. Number two would be the Long Middle School Committee will develop a long-range strategic plan and operational and communication protocols to ensure that it effectively leads and serves the community. Number three would be the Long Middle School Committee will ensure that programming and curriculum are accessible to all families and serve the diverse needs of all learners. And number four is the Long Middle School Committee will advance the social-emotional health of students by supporting programming and initiatives aimed at reducing stress and anxiety.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Melanie?
The only thing I want to clarify, some of this could definitely be done in subcommittees, and some probably can't. Am I understanding correctly, like integrating grammar and... I think that's you. So, right, wouldn't all be... We'd kind of be divvied up on some subcommittees, some with admin, and that social-emotional learning.
And then the subcommittees would bring it back here, so everything eventually would be before all of us.
Okay. Karen?
Just from my understanding, sort of where do we go from here? Like, how do we assess whether or not we've met that goal? Is that like the end of the year, we kind of look at it and say, yes, we've met this goal, no, we haven't? What do we need to do to meet... Kind of like, where do we go from here?
Yeah. So I guess I have similar thoughts on that. I'm the type of person that likes a list and things where I can check off, yes, I did this, and so part of me likes to, with this goal, create, you know, two or three things, tasks for us to do in order to reach that goal. That would be, you know, again, that's just the way I operate, but I understand leaving it open so that we have flexibility and so...
What about... So, I mean, we could do it on this document and come back, or I'm thinking, because I agree with that, that it is nice to have that, or create a second document that looks at these four goals and comes up with them. I mean, I think we could do it either way, but I do think it is important. It does help us stay focused, and so I'd be in favor of either.
So what if we kicked this back to Sue, Tom, and Marty and Diane to help us look at some, and Operations Sub, I think, could be good with this, and then try to come up with some actionable items from the language that we have here, and then we can look back at it again? How does that sound?
That's good, and that'll give me a chance just to touch base on a couple of things.
Melanie?
Can the Subcommittee, I mean, Operations Subcommittee write their own goals and bring that back?
So if, I think what we're thinking right now is to be approved, to approve the recommended consensus goals, and then Subcommittee could work on the actionable items that would be related to that call.
Okay.
Rather than starting over, I think, at the Subcommittee level, because I think, you know, we all provided input already, so if we... Does that sound...
Yeah, I think I just misunderstood what...
I think the...
You mean like objectives?
Correct. Yeah, so if we take, we can approve them.
So we would actually go with the objectives. So I used the wrong word.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Back to the men.
I just want to bring up, I think, the only issue... Well, I guess first I want to say I like the idea of how all the goals fit into these nice, clean topics, and it seems like we have a variety of things. Some goals we'll work on over the course of the year, some are little bullet point, task-oriented things that we can kind of check off pretty quickly, so there's a mix and match of all of that. My only concern, I guess, would be the operate... On the operations side, creating the new packet to help facilitate a smooth transition from town member to the role of school committee member. I guess the way Operations Sub is set up right now is the three new members. So we would kind of need a mentor to guide us, and I have no problem, you know, creating that packet, and I think we probably all have something we can add about, you know, what we found would have been easier for us, but maybe just one guiding person to kind of oversee that a little bit would be helpful.
So, and Marty and I have talked a lot about that, and just yesterday, we have some ideas, and I actually meant to mention them in the chair report. I think Marty and Tom will connect, I mean, Marty, Tom, Diane, and Sue will connect a little bit for us and start working on like a new member packet. And then if you, as an Operations Sub, could be providing feedback to them, you can do that directly to them, even outside of a meeting, and then they can help us build that packet, so can kind of work on it together. I also meant to mention that I think we are going to have a training session here during one of our meetings, just a brief overview and like kind of a quick workshop on some of the things that have come up lately about, you know, questions and how the School Committee functions and roles and responsibilities and how to ask questions. And there's also a really good binder that I realized none of you got, that came when I did the training myself here, and it... You can open it up and reference anything, so I think that will also help, and maybe we can make that a part of our beginning for new members, is to make sure that, you know, sign up right away for the, or have that training done here, and the packet can come along with it, and you can go home and read it and digest it as you realize that you are now a School Committee member.
Sounds good.
That would be great.
Okay. So I think, who else had? Did that answer all of your questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So Sue, with curriculum, that's probably something where, for the objectives for that one, we probably need your assistance to figure out what can we actually accomplish this year? What should be our objectives for that one?
And I would imagine some of it might be to ask administration to do this or that, so it can still be one of our actionable goals, but it would be to direct administration to help us with something. Any other questions or discussions on this? We have a motion on the table and a second, so if we have none, I hate to take a vote without Jess. Let's see.
I think we should do that.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving the motion that Russ had on the table, which was to adopt the four recommended consensus goals as our four School Committee goals? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstain? Okay. That was a great process. Thank you so much to everybody that helped consolidate all the input and information. Very grateful that you did that for us. Thank you. Let's see, moving on, the district goals. Marty has...
Okay. So this fits a good segue, and I think what I'm about to present will fit nicely with the goals that you've identified for the committee, so...
Are you saying that, Marty?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's only been about 10 minutes or so. Come on.
Yeah, I think it's blinking now.
It's blinking now, yeah. Okay. So it should be up in a second. All right. Number A-12? A-12. A-15. Figure that out one of these years. So as you're aware, we are in the process of refining and defining our district improvement goals, and this has been a long time in the development, but like I said earlier, it's nice to see a lot of this gelling and coming together, and I think it will, what I'm about to present will fit in nicely with what the School Committee has identified. So I often think of these, you know, how we line up our goals and the importance of having educator goals line up with district goals, which in turn should line up with school goals, and, you know, in my view, will produce greater growth, more energy when those things happen. And so we have been working to identify some focal areas for district improvement, and we are about at the same stage as the School Committee in terms of identifying district improvement plan goals. So there's been a lot of sort of influences on the development of those focal areas. The areas have been informed by a staff and community survey that we completed last year, the school improvement plans that are the responsibility of school councils. They've been informed by DESI standards for district effectiveness. The administrative team has spent some time with those standards, reviewing those standards, and our performance against those standards. Obviously, achievement and performance data is important to us, demographic indicators, and then importantly, School Committee goals. So there's been a lot of influences on the development of those areas for district improvement. I want to spend just a moment on a major staff and community survey that we completed last year, because it really helped us understand what the expectations of the community were and helped us understand what the staff thought would be areas for improvement. And so we asked the question last year, you'll recall, I presented this at least once before, we asked the question of the community and the staff, what factors will be important to our success over the years, over the next three years? And we, using some research-based survey tools that were out there and using the district or the DESI standards for district effectiveness, we identified many areas that would potentially be areas for growth and improvement. And so when staff and community were asked to identify which items on that list kind of, you know, rose to the top, the things that appeared most frequently or were cited as most important to our improvement over the next three years were, not surprisingly, classroom instruction, and that's not to say that the, there's a sense that we need to improve that. In fact, the survey came back resoundingly that I think the community has a lot of faith in our educators, and it was, it was nice to see the really positive feedback we got in that area, but at the same time, we know that it's important that we focus on classroom instruction. It's the most important variable in a child's learning.
Marty, what are the spaces between the bullet points?
So, so the ones, so this was what, essentially what folks had to choose from, the full list, and then I just wanted to highlight those items that rose to the top.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So classroom instruction, hiring, developing, and retaining staff, supports and approaches for social-emotional well-being of students, alignment and consistency of delivery of the curriculum, and the differentiation of instruction. So again, not, maybe not surprisingly, what you just finished talking about as goals for the School Committee, I think, are reflected in this list here, and of those five factors, the one that was cited most frequently was supports and approaches for the social and emotional well-being of students. So this was clearly a priority for the community and for the staff. So we, to go back, we took all this input from all these sources, and we, as administrative team, kind of identified three areas: social-emotional learning, differentiation of curriculum and instructional practice, and curriculum alignment. And from that, we kind of spent some time wordsmithing and agreeing on verbiage. And relating to social-emotional learning, the focal area, the focus would be on fostering school cultures that are inclusive of all learners and staff and that support their diverse social and emotional needs. Again, I think it's in line with what the School Committee just voted as an area for growth and improvement. The second area was differentiation of curriculum and instructional practice, and the verbiage we settled on was to improve student learning through the differentiation of curriculum and instructional practice. This has been, you know, again, through the surveys and through PTO meetings and conversations with staff, it seems like this is a really clear expectation of the community that they're interested in making sure we're reaching all learners, learners who need extra help or mitigation, learners who are maybe typical in their profile, but also learners who need enrichment and extension. And so we think that that goal really encourages us to make sure that we're reaching all learners with our instructional practice.
So differentiation is really an educational term for not one-size-fits-all?
Correct.
But tailoring to make sure that each student's learning maybe in a different way, or material is being provided in a different way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the method of instruction, the mode of instruction, the intensity of instruction, the content of instruction, all those factors, you can, you can change and vary to make sure we're reaching all learners. And then finally, curriculum alignment, to provide consistent learning experiences across grade levels and schools through the improved alignment, delivery, and assessment of the curriculum. Again, this has been a constant theme. We've talked about it at these meetings. Certainly, it's been a focus of our administrative team. At the end of last year, one of the things that Sue did was begin to pull together our curriculum coordinators at all levels. They really were, we want to make sure that they're not operating in silos and they're not operating independently of one another, and so Sue has created a vehicle, a platform, a way for our curriculum coordinators to make sure that they're working together and that they're, they understand the direction that, that each one is going, you know, each discipline is going, each grade level's going. So one of the things that we did at convocation, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In terms of alignment, are we going to include homework in that category, or was there any discussion about consistency?
I think, I think that's a...
Between schools?
I think that's a great example of alignment, you know, of aligning our practice and making sure that a child's experience is similar across grades and schools. And so we want to, we want to make sure that we're all calibrated and we have a common understanding of what meaningful homework is, so that's absolutely a key part of that.
Yeah, it seems like that's been something that we're working towards addressing a little bit more as we're looking at the homework goals, also trying to, you know, find some consistency, and I know that the elementary schools have done some work on it, and it, you know, hopefully we can get a little bit more as we move up to the middle schools as well.
Absolutely.
But it's all a work in progress. I just want it to be part of that.
Yeah, I think...
You know, focus, too.
I think with curriculum alignment, there's never a finish line. You never get there. It's always, it's always a work in progress, and, but I think we want to be sharp in our focus in that area. So what we, one of the things that we did this summer with the administrative team was sort of take an inventory of what we've done in these areas in recent years. And I want to show you that inventory, because I think it's an impressive inventory. I think there, I think we've got a good foundation to work off of. So to give you an example, in relation to supporting, creating school cultures that are inclusive and support students' diverse social-emotional needs, there's a list of things that we've been engaged in. I won't read it, but again, this is the foundation that we are working off of. We're not starting from scratch, right? We didn't, you know, these things have been going on for many years, but they're examples of how we're already down the road a ways in many respects, and we want to continue down this road in ways that are really focused. And, you know, certainly, the School Committee has been involved and supportive of that list and the other lists that I'm about to show you. Investments we made in adjustment counseling just today, right? The commitment to special programs, speaker series, that needed to be budgeted. There's so many examples of things that are already happening to support students' needs. Any questions on that list at all? Yeah?
For the social-emotional learning curriculum, I know that the different, I believe these are, Peace Builders, Second Step, and Responsive Classroom are all elementary curriculum. So just with regard to the theme of consistency and alignment, that might be something to keep discussing over the next two or three years. I know some of these are pretty new curriculums, but something that a parent brought up in a PTO meeting that I thought was really valuable at Blueberry Hill was, it would be great for the kids to all have the same social-emotional language going to the middle school and then going to the high school, so that it's really universal and part of our Long Middle culture at some point. And we might be able to do that through the curriculum, the different curriculums we currently have in place, but, you know, it's definitely something that I think is important to look at and consider.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we want to, and this work has been done, you know, before I came on board as superintendent, is sort of making sure that there's a crosswalk between those programs. I think, you know, it's that, it's that balance between... I think, you know, it's that, it's that balance between ensuring that our elementary schools have an opportunity to create their own identity, their own culture, but also making sure that we're consistent in our practice. So, we want to find that, that sweet spot, you know, we want to find that place where-
How much government intervention?
Well, right, you know, and there is, at, you know, at each of the schools, there is a commitment to those frameworks, and they provide kids with a common understanding or a common approach to their behavior, so. But I hear what you're saying, I mean, we want to make sure that we're identifying the consistencies and the overlaps in those programs. And I think there is enough intersection between those three that we can ensure that kids are having a common experience.
And I also think from a budgetary standpoint, I know that a lot of this has been funded by PTOs, and it's something that we do need to consider advocating for as a school committee as part of what we fund as a town, if, you know, it's becoming one of our priorities.
Right.
And it's certainly something that the finance committee is aware of and the select board is aware of because of discussions we had last year.
Yeah, the PD associated with these social, emotional frameworks is something that we want to stay committed to, you know, and, and that happened actually at the beginning of this year at our elementary schools, you know, that, but making sure that as new teachers join us, that they've got the training in those, in those frameworks. And then at the middle school, we've asked them to, you know, really work very pointedly in identifying some competencies relating to social, emotional learning. And so, Nicole Paris-Crowe is our new assistant principal at Williams, and she's done a great job with that. Bridget Duley is an assistant principal at Glenbrook, and she's got a background in counseling. So, we've got some great people in place to kind of drive that, that work at the middle school level. So, it's a good list, right? I mean, there's a lot that we're, that we're working off of. Here's more, you know, drug use prevention lessons, again, I won't read you the list, but this is the foundation that we're working off of, you know, we've made a lot of progress in these areas. I want to highlight the last three bullets there: district wellness program, employee benefits fair, mentoring and induction programs, you know. Wellness is not just for students, right? We want to make sure that we're attending to the needs of staff as well. And again, I think Long Meadow can be proud of some of the work that we've done in that area, and we want to continue to build on the supports that we're providing to staff. The second goal relating to differentiation, again, I think it's an impressive list. The instructional model at the elementary school in literacy and math, the workshop model that, that we're making great progress in is, is, you know, by definition inherently, it provides an opportunity for differentiation. It's not whole class instruction, it's a workshop model, it's built on working with small groups, and so, we'll hopefully continue our commitment there. The RTI framework, the wind blocks, you know, all of these things are, are in place. There's, a lot of the ingredients are there. More, more to the list here, again, relating to differentiation, committee supported and encouraged and prompted us even to look at movement in the classroom, you know, and that's a great way to ensure that we're meeting kids' individual needs. So, the movement equipment, the sensory equipment that we've gotten is, has been fantastic, we're learning how to use it effectively. Benchmark assessment systems, again, you know, monitoring kids' progress on a, on a regular, ongoing basis. So, it's a great list, it's a list that I'm proud of, and it's a list that we, we need to build on. And then the last one, these are some of the things that are underway to ensure that we are aligned across grades and disciplines. And notice, I spelled principals wrong, the homework guiding principals. Hopefully, the principals are guiding the principals. Not a good show there. But anyways, there's a good list, a lot to work off of, and we'll, we'll continue our commitments in these areas and ensure that all our arrows are pointed in the next direction. For us, the next steps involve, similar to what you were just talking about, we want to identify specific objectives in line with these goals. So, that's what our administrative team is engaged in right now, so. So, at some point, we'll come to you with a formal plan, it will, will seek the approval of the school committee, I'm guessing it might be, if not your next meeting, maybe the one after that will have a, a sort of written document for you to review, but it will fall in line with what you're seeing here today. So, that's it.
Karen?
Just a quick comment, I just want to say thank you, and I just want to compliment you on the difference between the district plan that was previously in place and what, just the framework of what you have here, because for anyone that's looked at it, it's very much like MCAT scores, what percentage of MCAT scores will we improve within the five years? And to me, just looking at what the parents are showing you that they care about, it's not MCAT scores. So, so I just really want to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. Moving on, we have the town long-range plan. So, I think also in your packet was an email from Mr. Locusa requesting that we provide the select board with a long-range plan for our committee and the schools. I have asked the operations subcommittee to work alongside Superintendent Rocher and Maza, Assistant Superintendent Maza, to prepare something for the school committee to review and consider for submission. I put it on our agenda today in case anybody wanted to ask questions or provide some feedback here regarding that email and that request. Melanie?
Yeah, and I just want to point out that again, with three new members being on operations, when one of the goals is to look at a horizon of five, 10, and 20 years, not sure how much input we may have, I know Tom will have lots of, lots of good information, but just again, something to keep in mind that we're looking at the month right now and not the 20-year mark, but that, I guess, is my only. We're going to need some-
And I think we'll need, and, and we'll need some clarification, I'll need to get some clarification for you in terms of what specifically they're looking for. I think a lot of, a lot of the long-range planning that they're looking at relates to land use and zoning and facility use, building use. So, there, there might be, I'm sure there will be, school committee involvement in that. And so, I'll try to, if that goes to operations sub, we'll try to kind of gather some feedback for you in terms of what specifically might be helpful to the town in developing that long-range plan.
You can say further divide it into goal areas, including capital projects, programming, financial goals. So, it's kind of, kind of spreads along, you know, a wide range of interests.
It's a lot.
So, we're reaching out to a lot of people.
It's a broad request, and I think we'll be able to fine-tune it a little bit better so we can respond in the way that they wanted us to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it's just going to be a big collaboration, just given all these topics and goals.
But for us, I mean, I would think besides the middle school, I mean, that's the big thing, but the next 20 years, like this buildings, new elementaries, we probably have some projects, we have that long capital list of things we might want. I don't know about that they would be interested in as far as programming or those type of things, I'm just not sure.
I put it on here.
Where does it say, where does it say programming?
The last line of the first paragraph.
Programming and financial goals. But I don't, I think realistically for the school committee, I'm not sure how much there is to send back around, other than the middle schools, obviously, right?
I think, you know, a couple of years ago, we had the request to fund the full-day kindergarten. So, that would have been something I think they were referring to, that if we have that on our pipeline for three years out, they'd like to know about it. As we sit here, I don't know of anything, but if anybody can think of something-
A major expenditure.
Right, that was something that, that affected the budget and that they'd like us to know about if we have something on the horizon, but-
And the obvious challenge is that we can't bind future school committees with any, you know, sort of, this is what we're going to do, but the, you know, each school committee each year is not bound to that agreement, so we really have to figure out what kind of information they want and what is really going to have any sort of weight or validity or meaning to it. Do you know what I'm saying, really threshing that out is?
Yeah.
I think, you know, from a capital standpoint, we can look at the list-
Yes, for sure. You know- Capitals, maybe the-
The middle schools are easy to identify right now, but then at the same time, if they're asking for 20 years out, where will our elementary schools be and what will we need to do financially to update those buildings?
Right.
It might be, you know, just, I guess, what they're asking for, but we can-
So, right, it would be, I mean, we could definitely focus on our capitalists, and we could definitely focus on our buildings, but beyond that gets a little tricky.
Right.
So, I think we do our best, and, you know.
And I think they want this by November 1st, correct?
Yeah.
And I do appreciate, I do want to go on record as saying, I appreciate the fact that the select, the select board is really doing what people have been asking them to do for a long time, which is start to take a long-range look at what we're doing in town and try to bring the committees together and do it. So, that is positive, so I think this is a positive step in the right direction that everybody's been looking for. Thank you.
Maybe, so, the finance committee, I sent an email, but the finance committee is meeting on September 18th at 6:00 at the fire station, and I think this is one of the things they're going to be talking about in general is the long, long-range plan. I think that's one of the topics, I was going to try and make it, but-
And if you go, you can report to Marty if he's not there, you know, anything that might help with the task of the long-range plan.
Sure.
It's really helpful if people do know the dates when the finance committee is meeting, just to mention it at our meetings, that helps a lot, because I think it's, it's great for school committee members to go to their meetings. It helped a lot last year, you know, the couple meetings Tom and Marty and I went to, and Russ as well, just helps the communication a lot when we get to budget season, everybody sort of understands the nitty-gritty before we get there, so.
Yeah.
I found it-
And we really go just to be as members of the public, but those meetings, we actually had some discussion too.
Yeah.
But this one, I was just going to go and listen, and if they had questions, we could bring it back here, or I'll bring it back here. Anybody that wants to go, definitely should, should go too.
September 18th at 6 o'clock.
At the fire station. I haven't actually looked up their full agenda, one of the members told me that that was coming up, so.
So, we have no executive session planned for this meeting, I think that includes other than the report from Braggie. So, I think we can take a quick 10-minute recess if that's okay, because he was planning on coming at 2:20.
Okay.
And then when he gets here, we can put his report, and then-
Michelle, could I just ask regarding the long-range planning, will we be discussing this later, or was this part of-
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss something? No, so, that was-
That was from the town.
For information, that was part of what I think they were trying to use to develop this long-range plan, so I don't know if any of you were able to take a look on the website, but I think you were able to remove the seal online so that you could view the questions. But they, we asked for this when they sent us the request about the long-range plan, just to kind of help us see where they were coming from and what they were using for information to develop this long-range plan. So, this really was for communicate, I mean, for informational purposes, and then discussion if there is anything on it.
I think only question one and two related to school committee, is that correct?
I believe. I think only question two, really, right? Did question one say anything?
One, well, one, one addressed if services need to be cut, what area could, would you be in favor of cutting? So, in a roundabout way, you know, school was included in that? And then question two was more specific, school capital spending, so I just didn't know if we were going to discuss that or not.
We, we can, it's on our agenda, so if you had any feedback from that, Melanie, that you'd like to-
Am I interpreting, when they, like, question number one, and 73% wanted no change in police, did they only put down what received the majority of response? Does anyone know? So, we don't know what percentage put schools, or is that how I'm reading this?
That isn't it, that, the answer to that would be in the, in the full packet, which we have, we have some hard copies available.
I tried printing it, it is 100 and something, 120 pages long. So, I tried printing it as a booklet, but you really can't read much, but you're more than welcome to-
Well, I'm like I said, I think only question one and two even pertain to schools, the rest does not per se, so I, I guess I would just be curious to see how people answered one and two.
So, the way I took this was that they put down like 73.79, 79% would be like the leading thing, no change in school, and then the reverse to that, because there was only one, would have been, you know, change. But then, I think the thing that rose to the, to the highest in question number two was the, the schools. So, Long Meadow needs to reduce capital spending, what expenditures should be prioritized? So, and then please rank your priorities, I'm not online.
Okay.
Okay. So, I, I think the number one priority that, that rose to the top would have been the schools.
Receiving 38%.
It looks like if you look at the, the full booklet that I showed, it's fire and emergency in schools are really the top, and police are the ones that sort of stand out.
Okay, question two?
Yeah.
Did school got the majority of 38%?
Just slightly, it's almost the same as fire and emergency.
Stephanie?
And I just want to say, I'm pulling it up again, from what I remember when I read it, is that, you know, I just caution, it's not a representative sample when you look at the demographics that answered it, you know, I mean, you can take it as, this is what these people thought, and this demographic who answered this, and that's about it. So, I mean-
Are you looking at how many people, do you-
Yeah, I had, 322 answered it.
And then it said the ages, the gender-
It was all like school parents.
Right, so it really, I would caution anyone reading too much into it, and that's the thing with these surveys, is they state, feed a curiosity, but the information you get back is not necessarily representative of what's going on, so.
I totally agree with that, but also, when I, I actually did that survey too, and a lot of the questions were kind of leading in one way or the other, so it's kind of-
Very much so.
But I think at the end of the day, probably everybody would say I value fire, I value police, I value school.
Yeah.
So, the real question is for the elected officials, you know, all of us in the board too, is priority for what happens, you know, which buildings and what programs, that's all, this long-term plan is a good idea, but it's really the elected officials have to make those choices, because you're elected to decide what is really the priority. I mean, I think we all know that the public supports all of those things, but it's more of the priority based on how bad is that building, what does it look like, you know, what's going on, you know, demographics changing, there's more people above 60 now, so should we do the senior center now? You know, those are all the factors you consider, so I, I agree with you that the survey is interesting, but I don't think it's really, should drive much of anything as far as what we do next necessarily.
Any other discussion on the long-range plan? Hello? Hi, Braggie. So, with that, we can move, once you get settled, we'll go through, do you have a report for us or anything to talk about?
Me and Mr. Dunkerley got the email thing working, so I think we're going to send an email out to the students soon to let them know that there's a place they can send their suggestions.
Perfect.
I think that's pretty much it for now.
Do you know what the email address is right now?
Uh, I think it's called SCAC, I'm not sure yet, but it goes straight to my email-
Okay.
And Mr. Dunkerley, so.
Perfect, we can get that up on the website and everything when that's ready.
So, they shouldn't email anything about Mr. Dunkerley.
Yeah.
That's what they say.
Yo.
Anything else to add today?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
How, how's the athletics going, anything new or exciting this week?
Boys soccer won yesterday, so I think we're number one in Western Mass right now.
Fantastic.
Um, I had a cross-country meet, boys got, did not win, girls did really good, and they beat Northampton.
Okay.
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know about the others, oh, football, I think they beat Minnichin, and there's a game this Friday, home.
Big game, Westside, home opener. Westside is a, a good team this year, so that'll be an important game for both sides.
What time is the game?
Must be 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock?
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
And girls soccer? High school soccer is off to a good start. Two wins.
Awesome.
Oh, great. I'll just add.
Yeah, thank you for, that's great.
The Long Meadow Soccer turnaround.
Yes, yes, exactly. Exciting.
Are you all feeling settled and back in school mode?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. It's going good so far.
How are the freshmen doing?
I think they're fine. They seem fine.
They do?
Yeah.
Braggy, did they have class officers' speeches today? Was that today?
Yes, for freshmen.
For freshmen, okay.
Yeah.
And elections are coming up?
Was it Tuesday? They should meet, yeah, tomorrow.
Exciting. How about the food? How's the cafeteria doing?
I think it's pretty good.
Yeah.
I like cafeteria food. Other kids might complain, but I like it so much.
So you also like airplane food?
Uh, no. I don't go that far.
We do much better than that. It's just...
How's the gluten-free?
Oh, they have a sign out for that. They like clearly say vegetarian options, gluten-free options, just like a whiteboard.
What is that? How does that work, do you know, with the whiteboard? It just announces what they...
It just like says the options, and then somebody writes, erases it, and puts a new thing. Everything.
Favorite meal?
Nachos.
To advertise? The nachos. I've heard that before.
Love the nacho.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's a meal, but...
He adds rice and chicken.
Exactly. It covers all of it.
Stand corrected. You're thinking Six Flags.
With the cheese.
These are whole grain nacho chips on top of...
Do we have results from the vote last night for the parents?
For school council at the high school? I have not heard.
Okay. Can I ask him a question? Absolutely. Do you have anything that you feel is coming up from, are you getting any feedback from other students or anything that's kind of on the agenda that you feel is kind of...
No, not yet. I'm just trying to get this email thing going so that we can get some feedback, that we actually like know what to do and like how we can help the students. Because last year, I think with that survey, found out like a lot, there was like a few kids that like really cared about the gluten-free and vegetarian options, but most people didn't really care about it. So we're just like trying to get this email thing going so we can get some like real feedback.
What about the no homework policy? They want to bring that up?
No, I think they're actually advocating for more, so...
Maybe.
This will be his last meeting.
You'll be getting a lot of emails soon.
Is there anything else from anybody? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I might, maybe I'll just introduce this now. I was approached by a parent regarding bringing back pep rallies in high school. Now, he probably is not so familiar with pep rallies, but I know that I have them in high school and probably everyone else. So I'm not quite sure how to have this question answered or by whom. I did refer this person to send an email, once it's up and running.
Yeah, I'd say, I would say, you know, that's the type of thing we'd love to see if there was a grassroots interest in that among students or with school councils. You know, I think what I see, I see a lot of schools moving away from pep rallies in some ways because they're a little bit, they're not very inclusive, they're exclusionary, it's sort of celebrating one segment of the school population over others. And I think if you're doing any types of pep rallies like that, my interest personally would want to make sure that it's very inclusive and it's reflective of the whole student body. That would be, you know, a pretty big undertaking if they were to do that, but I think that's a great thing to, you know, hear from the students to see if that's, you know, something they have an interest in, but, you know...
I think they're all going to have to Google what a pep rally is.
Wear your Letterman sweater and come to the pep rally.
Well, in some ways, it is a very bonding experience, even if for someone who might not be playing sports per se. It's a spirited, bonding, I think for all kids, I do feel that it's inclusive in that sense.
Yeah.
I know our president said that was, in his campaign speech, he said that he was going to bring some pep rallies. So I think they're working on that.
Get some feelers out for it.
Sorry.
I'd be interested to hear, you know, kind of what you get back. I have a lot of thoughts about pep rallies, but it's not on the agenda, so...
Great.
Nice job, Sid.
Okay, seeing, there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, opposed, it is 2:24, we'll call the meeting to close.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.